Have you heard from Charlie tonight?
I have. I was wondering if everyone was gonna remember that we switched. You guys are great, so. So, yeah, it's, we're on Facebook.
You can stand for the.
But we didn't. But United States of America. To the world. For justice. One nation, under God. The invisible and for liberty and justice for all.
It is six thirty, I will open up the February fifteenth. The town council meeting, all town councillors are present except for councillor Clemmons, who's active this evening. Town manager Melissa Doan is also here. And I will make the motion to accept the January thirtieth town council minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the minutes of the last meeting, anything there, anybody has any questions about comments, instructions?
Um, yeah, I just have the one comment. And we know the council is okay with the second page, second paragraph. In the end, nothing's changed, it's impossible to work with Mr. Robert Wing. Did you know?
Yes.
Didn't know, um, we wanted to reword that a little bit. Um, I know it's been difficult, but. I just didn't know if everybody was comfortable with that. Where it says it's impossible to work with Mr. Wing. You know, it's been difficult, but using those words.
Do you want to change to it has been difficult to work with Mr. Wing?
Uh, yes, something to that effect, yes.
Extremely difficult?
Yes.
Yep.
But still holding out hope that.
Maybe we can work something.
Exactly.
I can make that change.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else in the minute from the last meeting? Not my book, Jim. Hi, Dwayne.
Hi, Larry.
Hi.
Mark and I. Citizens' requests, right now, we don't have any citizens, if any, in person, but we're also live on Facebook, so we can check that a little bit later, see if anybody has any requests. So we'll jump down to the managers' report.
Um, well, I obviously don't have a lot because I'm on vacation. Um, but the couple of things, um, the solid waste contractor, Neil Waterfield, contacted me today and he has set up the spring cleanup for May fourth, Saturday, May fourth, from seven thirty to twelve thirty. And we'll do that the same as we have in the years past, in which residents will have to pay the fifteen dollar fee and have the two load minimum. And then the other item, uh, just to let you know, um, I did email, um, our attorney this morning, John Hammer, to see if there was any update regarding one fourteen Main Street, and I got an automatic reply that he's on vacation until February twentieth, so I will follow up with him again next week. And that's really all I have.
Well, welcome back.
Thank you.
Glad you enjoyed your time.
I did enjoy my time, and I want to appreciate, I appreciate that, because typically when I go on vacation, something happens and I deal with it when I was on vacation, and this vacation, I didn't have anything happen and I didn't, I dealt with a couple emails throughout the day just to help things go on when it went out. Very appreciative of that.
You got a good one.
Yeah.
That's good. Um, quick question on the, um, spring cleanup. Uh, no e-waste again this time around?
No, um, I can do some research on that. We should try to do something, so I don't know if I'd be able to arrange it this spring, but maybe something involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the managers' report for this evening? If not, we'll jump down to new business. New business are you missing?
Um, no.
Any new business from the council? I wasn't able to, I know you put this in our boxes, I wasn't able to look down the meeting either on for RSU thirty-four, um, that was held on Monday, but looks like there's a couple of things that you highlighted there uh, about changes to civil locations for the special ed office. And then, um, vinyl rear entry doors and classroom renovation, feels good there.
Yeah.
Putting some now, which towards the local school here.
Something I noticed on that communication from RSU. It appears like they've got a forty thousand dollar deductible on damage at the buildings.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's, that's incredible.
It's fairly high, yeah.
It's a good thing we don't have more than one.
Well, no, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, oh yeah, the damage was forty thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot.
Hey Charlie.
What do we have for deductibles here?
You know, I mean, I'm not sure, but I would hope it's not bad, but I will look. I will actually look, you know?
I'm just curious.
Hundred thousand seems like a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. I know, um, I don't think ours, I will check, I know like, because we had some damage from the sign of the, on fire station, sign and the vinyl siding. And, um, I talked to our representative and she said you would never need to deduct a book, and that was like, like a couple thousand dollars. But she didn't say anything over a hundred thousand dollars, but I will check.
Just curious.
One of the things on that, uh, with the special education office, does anybody except me get, get that little newspaper that they send around with the special ed classes that are available?
Are you talking about special ed or adult ed?
Adult ed.
Yeah, this is special ed, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, you don't get it?
No.
Adult ed is, if you look at Hammond and you look at R and L, probably ten pages. You look at Old Town, it's a quarter of a page.
Yeah.
Isn't, they don't, you know, operate anything, it's crazy. Is that through the RSU?
Yes, add all that through the RSU.
Yeah.
Through the RSU, but they joined up with Hammond because Hammond was very active, so.
So residents can go to.
You can go to Hammond, you can go to R and L. Old Town has, that's not there.
Uh, anything else on new business from the council? Just for the record, councillor Clemmons has joined as well.
Thank you. Sorry.
Traffic jam over at Chino Fund.
Well, I'll tell you, the six o'clock news was just coming on when I left the house.
Wow.
It's good rain, wasn't it?
Different, different day of the week, right?
Yeah, that's what it is. Well, we all love your changes.
Any new business from the council? If not, we'll jump down to unfinished business before we get into the municipal budget, any other unfinished business missing?
I do not believe so.
Any other unfinished business from the council? I saw you had put in our boxes as well, um, a note to, uh, two ninety-seven Main Street, any response back?
No, there was none when I, uh, came in today. Um, I haven't seen Dean this week, so I don't know if we reached out to Dean yesterday or not, but, uh, there was no response to me thus far.
Okay. Any unfinished business from the council before we talk about the budget? Okay, is not any discussion on the budget?
I did put in your, um, boxes today. Um, the main revenue, um, has given us an updated main, uh, municipal revenue sharing projections, and so that added five thousand dollars, uh, to our revenue. It went up to two hundred and ninety-three thousand. Um, and then I also received, uh, last week a final budget from the fire department, and that budget increased by twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, so therefore, we're now thirty-seven thousand, six sixty-three, forty-six above, uh, the budget account. So that's what I updated today.
Melissa, I got just a couple of things here that I picked up as I walked through this thing. Under the memos tab is your town manager budget message.
Yes.
Uh, down the next to the last line from the bottom, it says total collected as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty, that's twenty twenty-three, right? I guess.
Oh, what are you talking about?
Down, uh, the next to the last line on the.
Oh, yes, total of revenue, yes, that's three twenty twenty-three, yeah, thank you.
And on that same page, uh, obviously, there are some things there that are concerning, but there's very little that we can do about them. Uh, the legal fees, I think, you're reading the ballpark with that, probably, uh, reality is that we're going to spend a lot of money on legal fees over the next year or two even. And the ambulance, uh, you remarked on this the last time when you presented the budget, uh, with respect to the increase, and I happened to be thinking about that while I was sitting at home twiddling my thumbs. Last year, we still had revenue going into the ambulance budget from Milford, right?
Yeah.
This year it's totally gone.
Yeah.
So this twenty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, I'm kind of thinking, I'm kind of a little surprised it's not low, actually.
I mean, I don't, I haven't had discussions with Old Town, they just presented that first, and that's what I put in here. Um, but I do remember when they came here, um, we were talking about the increase overall being because of the shift change.
Yeah.
You know, and adding the additional shift, and that's why the increase was so substantial that one time.
Right, last year.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if now that that burden is over, then you're kind of a different base and it was fire.
I remember thinking last year, and I might have said it here, that if we think it's bad now, wait until Milford's revenue drops, oh. And here we are, Milford's revenue is gone now. And, and still the increases, you know, it's appreciable at twenty-two thousand, but frankly, I probably might have thought it would be more than that.
Yeah, I had that highlighted as well, and obviously a seventeen percent increase on any line item is, you know, a, a big jump. Um, you said you hadn't really heard from them, I, I wonder if they could provide us, I know we've asked for it before, a breakdown of the last year of the call, you know, the call report that they, they provided to us before. Just to see if that has changed, lowered for, for grabbing, maybe, and it doesn't.
A call breakdown over like a five-year period, so you can see whether the calls are increasing over the year.
I have them up until, I don't have the last years, but yeah, I can, I can ask for new call, call volumes for that here.
They, they didn't belong with the notes that they sent, say that they changed their formula at all, just a
No.
Population split, right?
Yeah, they didn't.
There wasn't a difference, there wasn't so many of the calls, the calls that required transport. That was it, right?
They do not consider calls in our allocation at all.
Right.
It's by population.
Out of the new municipal, you know, you're helping out their fire department, they help all yours by, by responding to the call. Those are transports that really.
Transports is where ambulances get paid.
Yep.
If they don't transport, then they don't get paid for that service by insurance companies.
And that's, yeah, that's insurance, that's everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be good to see if they've done, I mean, I know they provided numbers before, are they doing better with that? You know, the insurance building, getting, you know, getting some money coming in versus um, what they had in collections last year was.
Remember they had a whole bunch of non-collectibles?
It was an awful lot. Non-collectibles.
Yeah.
And we were, I remember we were discussing how aggressive.
Yeah.
They were, the agency that they engaged with wasn't changing that stuff.
I can ask anything, but I'm sure that won't be a problem.
And nothing new out of a gust around them?
I haven't heard anything.
My.
Yeah.
Another one that I wanted to question, Melissa, is on the expense account. Uh, one of the line items is machine purchase and repair. In the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we had, uh, three thousand dollars there budgeted and a thirty-one hundred dollar carryover apparently from the prior year.
Right.
So it was a total of sixty-one hundred. Go back to the twenty-four, twenty-five column, and we're looking at budgeting four thousand with a carryover of two thousand, but out at the edge, on the right-hand margin, it looks like there's only a one thousand dollar carryover. Or, or is that an increase?
So we're talking about machine purchase and repair.
Yeah.
So this year's budget, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, I did four thousand, with an anticipated two thousand dollar carry forward, giving us a six thousand dollar overall available.
So that middle column there is anticipated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But to the, to, to the far right, which says budget plus or minus a thousand dollars, that's a thousand dollars over.
But I, last year, because last year I budgeted three thousand and had a thirty-one hundred dollar carry forward, giving us sixty-one hundred dollars, so our budget increased from three to four thousand dollars.
Oh, I see, okay.
And this might change as, you know, every year, um, when it gets closer to the, the, the week before the public hearing in which we finally presented, I go through our budget, our current budget, and I see if there's money available that we can increase as carry forwards and decrease the budget request.
On the next page, I think it is, Melissa, there's the, uh, employee HRA line. I need to ask if that's being utilized now at all by any of the employees?
Um, it has not been utilized.
I wonder if there's something we could do smarter with that money?
Well, I think we did a good job because the account is at like thirteen thousand dollars now, which would be if all of us were to get sick, we would need that money, right? That would make sixty percent of our deductible. That hasn't been occurring, we've been participating in networks, so we haven't had, uh, deductibles, et cetera. Um, also, we did do better, we did change that, that's why the decreases in the budget, we went to, um, we gave them income protection.
Right.
Insurance. So I think we've done a good job of getting that fund up to, you know, a, a good balance. And perhaps, and you know, and then like this year, we budgeted a smaller amount, and that's included in that smaller amount is the administration fee for the HRA. So we, I think we've done a good job, and then we put the additional money into that income protection.
What do you think about the future years, should we continue building or?
I think we just have to monitor it, you know, i- if an employee does take advantage of the benefit, you know, we are going to owe a responsibility to, to replenish that. And we replenished this at like a five-year. You know, we haven't just, we didn't just instantly put fifteen thousand dollars in there, we, we slowly built it and.
Yep.
So I think we've done a good job.
And, and you're comfortable that the employees understand that benefit?
Yep, actually, every January, I give them a benefit package, and it outlines what we have available. Because we even have more benefits available that we don't, the town doesn't pay for, but they can participate in through the health trust. Um, like, like they can increase their life insurance policy, they could add their children to a life insurance policy, so I outline all of that information.
Okay. On the vehicle insurance line? Um, I suppose that encompasses the fire department vehicles and.
That is all of the.
That's all of it?
Yeah.
Why, why are we slipping from the fifty-three hundred that we budgeted last year down to sixteen hundred?
Oh, I was anticipating a greater increase because of the new fire truck. And the new fire truck cost was very relative to the old fire truck cost because of the replacement value of that older truck was higher than the cost of what our new truck was. So we have money available carried forward because I budgeted higher last year for that new fire truck, and we ended up not needing those funds.
Okay, so there's no numbers issue with that line, you?
No.
Okay.
No.
I know that the streetlights were not pretty good amount.
Yeah.
We haven't added any way.
We haven't, it's just the cost of electricity is crazy, like even our light bills and Intumite's warrant for this building is almost five hundred dollars, we've never paid that. And we do run the heat pumps, you know, um, and April and I run little heaters under our desk because these windows aren't the greatest and it does get cold, but, uh, yeah, our electric bills have been increasing.
Yeah, and I had to highlight it as well, so the streetlight increases just possibly. With the heat pumps on the, you know, the, the sheet before, it shows that that's going up, you know, the, the budget amounts four thousand for next year versus twenty-six hundred what it was for this year. Have we seen any significant savings with oil?
Yeah, we haven't budgeted for oil in a couple of years because we've been using funds that we had budgeted before.
It's all carry forward?
Yeah, that's all carry forward.
That's good.
Yeah, so we're, we're, it's getting down there in this year, so we'll probably have to start budgeting for oil, but legitimately, that's all money that we had left over from, uh, oil usage before, before the heat pumps.
So the heat pumps are costing us a little more in electricity, but the oil is offset.
I think, right.
So.
Yeah.
That's my experience at home too.
Yeah.
Same here.
Yeah.
Um, Melissa, a little further over, we have the Blackman Stream Dam Commission.
Yep.
Why is there continuing cost in there?
Well, my hope is when the dam is finished, that the towns of Clifton, Eddington, Bradley, the Lake Association, the Museum, Department of Marine Resources, and Maine D E P will monitor that bridge, that dam. So in fifteen, twenty years, we're not dealing with the issue again, that we will build form a, a commission, and we will put money into that commission for maintenance and repair of that dam and have all the partners join in the funding of that, because Maine Forest and logging museum is never going to have enough money to keep that, that dam maintenance, you know, the maintenance done on the dam.
So we're not alone in, uh, funding this commission?
No, every year, um, actually on our general ledger, there's a, um, a Blackman Stream account that we get money from the towns of Clifton and Eddington now, and it's building a reserve.
Okay, I was just curious.
We started at a thousand and now we're down, I told the towns, let's go to five hundred, uh, a piece, so.
Was that the same from C P L A?
They have not donated, C P L A hasn't.
They, I know they intend to.
They probably do intend to, but we haven't formed a commission, so I didn't feel comfortable asking them, but the towns is different because I understand town budgeting.
Sure.
If it's in a budget.
Yeah.
It's okay, it's when you take it away and try to put it back, that's when it's, it gives pressure, so.
So we have breathing issues.
Well, I'm hoping that the, the bridge, uh, the dam gets completed and then we can start working on it.
Water, our next is there.
Yeah.
A question on page one, Missy, under postage. Um, not that it's, you know, a huge line item, but I just had it highlighted. Is it a requirement that we send out, like, with tax bills by mail?
Actually, it is not a requirement that we send out tax bills.
Right.
Um, but it's a good practice if you want to get payment. Yeah, it's a requirement to do, um, we're required to send out our motor vehicle reports every week, certified mail, which is like twelve bucks a week. But for mailing right now, it's, it's crazy, a stamp is what, sixty cents?
Sixty.
Um.
Crazy.
So we're required to do that every week. Um, in June, we have to send out thirty-day notices that if people notice that in thirty days if they don't make payment, that we're going to lien their property. And then in those thirty days, we have to send them another certified mailing saying, okay, your thirty days is up, we put a lien on your property. And then eighteen months from then, we send those people another certified mailing saying you have forty-five days to pay or your home is automatically going to be foreclosed on. So those are constant requirements that we have. Um, and then obviously we send out bills, you know, every, every, every other week and just our regular mailings. We, if somebody registers their dogs online, um, we have to send them their dog tags. Um, absentee ballots, we, we find that a hundred percent, and it's, it's two stamps for ballot, you know, so postage is, is the thing.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was an environment or not, I think it's probably small family carers' best practice is to continue to know.
Yeah, and then we do bulk mailing too, I purchased, you know, I have a company do our mailing for, so we do a cheaper mailing rate than we would if we did them ourselves, but yeah.
Listen, I'm not finding the right tab for this, but there's a sheet in the back of our budget book uh, with a letterhead on it, B A C T S. It's the Bangor Area Comprehensive Transportation System.
Okay, so yeah, that's VAX, um, I talk about VAX a lot when I'm talking about Route one seventy-eight. Um, and so every year, um, we have to give them, um, we pay them, if we're required to pay them our monthly share, our yearly share of participating in VAX. That's actually, that's school tuition, and then this year, they are participate, they are participating, the VAX um, voted to participate in this Safe Streets Grant, and Bradley's share of that is five sixty-six, twenty-five. And that's going to supposedly, um, I'll be quite honest with you, I don't participate in VAX because, um, I don't even like the fact that we have to be part of VAX because we never get anything from VAX. Um, but they, the entity itself voted and went part of it, um, to participate in the safer streets where they'll kind of evaluate our streets and give us recommendations on how we can make them safer. And supposedly those recommendations will make us eligible for grants to, to make the streets safer. And our share of this whole grant is five hundred and sixty-six dollars, and that's in our, uh, road construction account.
Are we budgeting it under road construction?
That's where I anticipate taking it out of, yeah.
I see. Well, I, I ran across this sheet, and I've heard you talk about VAX before, but I, I never quite really understood what they do for us.
They don't. It's part of, you know, I really, I don't participate, so, you know, I'm talking above my level of knowledge, but what I've gathered is because of our, uh, population in this corridor for a certain portion of Route one seventy-eight, has to be included in this month uh, metropolitan planning, which is a federal funded program. And so the people that benefit are Orenel in Bangor and Hammond and Orangeville, because they have a higher, you know, population. You know, Bradley and Milford, Milford also part of one seventy-eight in Route two, is part of the VAX, um, transportation system. And we just don't. First of all, there's not a greater, there's not a great need, you know, we're not putting streetlights up and we're not doing anything such that larger cities are, but they do receive most of it for federal funding from VAX.
So why, why wouldn't anything be, they're close on the Bangor line?
Because of the population. I don't, I don't really know, Larry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be completely, I can never figure it out.
We never see a bus right now over here, but neither does anyone, but it stops in Bro.
Yeah.
And that's right next door to them.
Eddington, when I first became, was the manager, a little section of Route nine and one seventy-eight was part, but a population shift happened. That's what it was expected to be.
Have we seen a lot of inflation in this annual bus?
No, this is something new. Typically, it's like a couple hundred dollars that we have to give them a year, we give them, it's like a hundred and forty-five to two hundred dollars. That, that's our annual dues to VAX. Um, I give that lower because I record my time, that would be the minutes, and that's our local share type thing. This is something that they, they voted to participate in, all entities in VAX have to pay their share towards the grant. If I had participated, I would have obviously voted not for that to happen, but I do not participate in VAX meetings.
Well, you're only one vote, right?
Um, one vote, yeah.
Somebody voted for this.
I'm assuming, uh, Bangor and Brewer.
Yeah, Bangor, I mean, Bangor's item here is almost forty thousand bucks.
Yeah.
But it also mentions in here that they're looking for state funds. Do you know if there is any budget to give them state funds?
I don't know, I just know that Bradley, just Bradley shares the five sixty-six, twenty-five. If you'd like, I can, um, ask them to give us more information or, you know, you can join us in the meeting to talk about it, but um, my call to them when I got this was, why do I have to pay for it if I'm not gonna get anything for it, and I say I, meaning the town Bradley, and they are stating that it, because we're in the VAX system, our streets will be evaluated, all the streets, not just Route one seventy-eight, all of our streets. And if recommendations are founded, that we will then be eligible for grants for safer streets.
Have we ever applied for street grants?
Um, we did, we applied through the state of Maine for the safer sidewalks, which we received.
Okay, yeah. But another thing that, that says specifically in here that if they. But another thing that says specifically in here that if they, if they came through and looked at our streets and came up with ten recommendations, then we could be on a, if you look at that last paragraph, we could be responsible for a lot more than just.
Yeah. I'll, I will ask them to, to, to come and talk to you via Zoom or or provide more information to you.
This is like Tax Agent without our representation.
Well, your manager could participate.
Yeah, right. I'd be interested in just seeing their mission statement if they've got one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you, they do have an amazing website that provides all of that information if you wanted to look at it. Do you remember the individuals that came and talked to us about climate, climate studies?
Yeah.
That's, that's BACS.
Okay.
Yeah.
So because the game, yeah, we've not provided bucks.
It's because they voted to throw in this grant. You know how grants, you know, you know how entities fund staffing?
I like the low BACS sections. Back on the front page of the expense accounts for the capital improvement, just carry forward only. You're not adding anything to that line item?
I did. We don't have the money to do that. I would love to be able to do that, but I, you know, I like filling reserves, but if, I always talk about that, if we ever find additional funds, I hope we always add it to our capital reserves, but.
When's the last time we added to that?
Well, every year, we do put money into municipal reserves of twenty-one thousand and fire department reserves of twenty-one thousand. That's built in our budget. That capital reserve line has been used for like computers, but you know, this dam, like now it's a normal thing. They're not even, computers really aren't even in our capital improvement plan anymore because they're less, they're not as expensive as they once were. But that mine item is for those types of items that, like, say, the heat pump broke or the boiler broke, that would, where that would, where that would come up. We haven't funded that since I've been the town manager.
Oh.
Yeah.
And what's the balance?
Whatever that line is, fourteen thousand.
The balance, okay.
Yeah.
The county tax number, is that solid, the twenty?
I haven't seen the final bill yet, but the commissioners did sign off on it, so I am anticipating that that is the final bill.
Talked about the ambulance contract, getting some data from them. We knew what was going left, we just, we locked into a three-year deal, right? Wayne already asked the questions.
Sorry?
No, I didn't want to stare your thumb down.
Jim, did you have any questions or are you just kind of laying it out? Like, do you have any specific questions or?
No. Couple of things jumped out at me, but already we've answered for the most part.
Yeah.
And we get, Melissa provided to us tonight, like updated sheets every time we come in between now and when we have to finalize everything as far as carry forwards and any revenue changes. Just getting the fire
Yep.
station budget tonight.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah.
Anything else on the budget for this evening? I think you did put a timeline in the beginning of the book through two, right?
Yes.
So today's the fifteenth, we're still at the seventeenth, twenty-seventh meeting, the meeting in March to be determined. And then we have until when budget five, public hearing, April twenty-third. Well, we haven't done.
Yeah, April twenty-third is the one the budget needs to be completed.
Well, as usual, Melissa, you've done a great job putting this thing together. Lot of numbers.
As always, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to be honest, it's the same every year. It's not really major. You know, the things that are major are the things that I talk about, you know, when.
Still, it's a lot of work.
Yeah. The ambulance increase of twenty-three thousand dollars or twenty-seven, whatever it was. You know, that's the first item I put in because I, and we're only allowed by charter. You know, the desire is to not increase more than the cost of living, and that's hard to do when you receive one item that's that much of an increase.
Is Mark still thinking that he'll have the reassessment done?
Yeah, he was actually, he's been in quite a bit working on it. He was in today working on it. I don't know what his, what his process is, but he's been here a lot.
Anything else on the budget this evening? If not, we'll have more questions next time we meet?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept a municipal warrant that we presented this evening. Motion's been made and seconded on the warrants. Any questions on any of those for tonight? If not, we'll vote. Jim, Duane, Charlie, Larry, Max and I. The next meeting is set for two weeks, not, not Tuesday, two weeks from Tuesday, right?
Tuesday.
So February twenty-seventh. Cannot make it, please let the town office and other town councillors know. Anything from the live stream?
Five people looking. One, you're one.
Yeah. I'd like to keep the number.
But no, there was no comments.
No comments. I will make a motion to adjourn for this evening then.
Second, I guess, third.
Everybody in?
You think you'll be able to take a nap tonight, Melissa?
Yeah, I'd say the same thing.